We do have some more in print, a couple of sonos. If you don't know me, I'm an algeator and a village president along with members of our boards. We have Brian Delton, Lynn Sutie, Barb Whitlock, Ken Hinkle, Mark Flick, Treasurer Kendall, and then Laura Root is back for our board members. And I know Kelly Stein is on her way. And let's hear it, Shaw. Our administrator, Rick will be here shortly, currently in the flash right now until about 6:30. So thanks for coming. We appreciate it. This is pretty informal. We're going to have a board meeting at 6:30, which is a little bit more formal if you would like to stay. But Mike Timmers and our team here, why don't you guys introduce yourselves before?
Yes, well, Mike Timmers is up before, so I'll be like the project manager of the construction manager, actually, out of the Burlington office.
My name is Jacob Ricker. I'm one of the design engineers for the project, and I'm kind of one of the people heading this up.
So, excuse me?
We just come from a construction company?
No, engineers.
Engineers.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophia Gougnatory. I'm another staff engineer helping out on the project.
So this is the same company we used when we did road, phase one of the roads. So we went back to them. They're really, they've been great to work with. And so they're here to share some things with you and then answer any questions you have. So feel free to ask away after they're done sharing. Thank you.
Yeah, so like I said, I'm going to try to be really general about what's going on, hopefully answer some of your questions. And then if you have questions specific to your project or to your property or something like that, find one of us and we'll talk, you know, afterwards. And I'll ask for questions as I plan to do. So basically, in about three weeks, the plans will be going out to bid for bidders to bid on. And on the 17th of April, the bid will be open, and then we'll find out who the little bidder is. And hopefully that's the contractor who chooses, or the village chooses. And on the 24th of April, they'll have a special meeting to discuss and approve if that's what they want to do at that time. So with that said, so that's April 24th. It takes usually about a month to get all the paperwork from the contractor and ordering materials and all that other stuff, at least a month before they start. I would expect, and this isn't certain until we have a contractor, but I would expect they'll probably start after school or sometime in that, you know, that range, and complete the project roughly before school starts is the goal. So what we, when we start projects, you know, to begin with, we'll do like the underdrain storm sewer, pipe work. They'll run all that pipe work, connect into the existing. They'll put in a few more inlets to kind of collect some of the water that may be held up in the ditch, or not the ditches, but the sides of the roads and whatnot. And then they will start removals, or actually driveway removals. And they'll probably, I mean, it depends, the contractor will kind of do what they're going to do. We don't want to tell them exactly, but probably the driveways will be next, get the driveways done, and then remove the asphalt, prepare the asphalt, grade, do any grading, and then pave the surface. After that would be restoration, seeding, the e-madding over the top of that. So the traffic, so one of the things would be traffic. Obviously, we need to get people to their homes, so the streets will be open during construction. I'm assuming some of you or most of you were here when phase one started. What's happening, you know, will be similar to that. You know, we're going to bother, the contractor's going to bother everybody here, I'm not going to lie, because it's loud and dusty and all that stuff. But they are going to be required to maintain traffic flow patterns. And, you know, the worst times will be when they're, you know, doing something right in front of your house or something like that. As far as driveway access, so if you, when we do the driveway fixes, so we're going to do the road and then partially into your driveway to kind of connect the two nicely vertically and, you know, try to move the water where it belongs and have a nice smooth transition into your driveways. We will plan to replace the driveways in time. So if you have asphalt, you get asphalt. If you have concrete, you'll get concrete. Gravel, I think there's a few gravel ones. That might give a little bit of an asphalt bump out, but it'll pull it back as gravel. With the concrete driveways, if you have one, that takes a little bit more time. So I'll say in general, you'll be able to get in and out of your driveways at all times. Again, it'd be a little inconvenience at times, of course, but at all times, we want you back in your driveway so that you're out of our, you know, I'll say our way, I'm not the contractor, but you're out of our way. With concrete driveways, it's a little bit different because we need to remove it. We need to pour it, and then it needs a cure to get parting up the drive on. So that takes a little bit longer, maybe two weeks. And the contractor honestly will have to figure out and communicate with you as to where you're going to park, which I'm sure is a question. And in that, at that time, I would expect you to be able to park on the street in front of your house. All the other times, we really aren't going to want you parking on the street during the work period. So once you know that they are gone for the day, five o'clock, whatever that time it's going to be, you know, you can park on the street and things like that. But what else? As far as private work, so if you have a roof scheduled or driveway work or other landscaping type things where you need a contractor to come in on your own private thing, you know, you might start thinking about that, thinking about dates, and maybe give us the best rough date that you might be thinking of doing that. And we can kind of coordinate with the contractor and make sure that they perform their work in coordination with your work. And it doesn't always work that smoothly, I realize, but it's the best we can do. So if you have something like that, let us know. Take your name and number, add us down, and we'll put it right in the notes for the pre-construction meeting. So before the project is starts, once we have a contractor, we can communicate that with them. During the project, I guess that's a little bit up in the air as far as who would be the main contact, us or the village or, you know, a representative will be available to answer questions and things like that. We are always available as well. So we'll get numbers to you to call for questions and that kind of thing. And what I always say to homeowners, because I'm a homeowner as well, when they're tearing up my road or your road, I want to, you know, I want to know things at times. If somebody's out there working, you can politely ask, hey, what's the plans here or there? And nine times out of nine and a half, they'll answer, they'll be happy to answer. Because they want to keep you guys happy. What else? So I know there's a room at sale. I don't have the date with me, but there's a-
We're thinking the last Saturday in June.
Last Saturday in June.
Yes.
Is it not Friday, too?
It would be Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Last Saturday in June.
Last Friday and Saturday. So I can bring you-
Okay. So we're aware of that.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Good reference. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. I appreciate that.
I wish I had a treat to throw out there.
Me, too.
Right here.
So we're aware of that. We were aware of it five years ago. You know, there's, again, going to be some inconvenience with that. Well, we will require the contractor to do what we want them to do if that means they can't work that day, or if they work that day, they have to provide, you know, access. So, you know, best access possible kind of thing. So we're going to require that to happen. So last few things, access to driveways. Parking, I know I touched on, but again, we want you parked in your driveways. Now, you're going to, you might have a party or something like that. I get it. Best case scenario, you're able to park off of the construction site somehow, if you're close to another road that's up you and down and that kind of thing. But if you have a party that you want, again, talk to the person that you'll be, you'll get a name for. And, you know, typically what we would do is coordinate with the contractor, hey, so-and-so's got a party, you know, just avoid that road, you know. And they do a pretty good job of that most of the time, so.
I'm laughing because I will have a party for my son's graduation. You're all invited.
Sounds like-
No, 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 so.
Let us know what-
That's like my big concern, though. So know that your village president also has concerns about how things will work.
Yes.
And we will, I am very good at communicating, so we will make sure that everybody has the information. If you are concerned about something, who to contact, whether it be somebody in the village office or Kapoor, we'll take care of it. So.
All right, just bring a dish of pass.
Yeah. The R S B is here now. Thanks for walking the street.
Mailboxes and garbages. So the mailboxes will remain, there are mailboxes in there. Mailboxes will remain in place as best, as much as we can. So in my experience of many years, contractors don't want to mess with them. They'll keep them right where they are unless they have to. And if they have to, then we're going to move them temporarily in a bucket, let's say, and keep, it really won't change for you too much, other than when the road's tore up. I get it, you know, there's gravel and that kind of thing. But and then when we're all done, they'll put them back where they either were or slightly, you know, where they need to be. Garbage, I don't see a big issue. Garbage collection will remain the same. Obviously, like I said, the road could be beat up or whatever, the end of the driveway or whatever you do now will work fine. Again, restoration, I've touched on, when they're all done, they're going to restore a topsoil seed. They put up an e-mat, an erosion mat, a blanket over the top of the grass or the dirt so the grass can go through. I'll tell you, probably the number one complaint we get as engineers about construction, engineers from homeowners is restoration. And believe me, I get it. I'm the same, I'm a homeowner as well. If it's not done right, it needs to be done right. So the e-mat, the matting gets placed, the grass is supposed to grow through. Ideally, you leave it grow until it gets like pretty long, and then you can cut it. You can cut right over that e-mat. I don't want to go too far into that because that gets messy. But just know that that e-mat's there to help grow the grass. And, you know, like mowing can continue throughout. The last, really the last thing I wanted to touch on was the sinkhole on sandish, in case you had a question. We are going to fix that. The plan is to do all of sandish, so we'll first tackle that sinkhole. I don't know, maybe you're not aware of it, but we are. So other than that, if you have any general questions right now for us, you know, that maybe the whole group could learn from or whatever, that would be great.
We already touched on this, but it appears like the road will be drivable to our parking part of the gravel, right?
Yeah.
For the most part.
Yeah, for the most part. And there's going to be time. And so I did skip out on one phase of the project. So they removed the asphalt, they checked to make sure it's, the base underneath is good enough to build your road on. Hopefully, it's not the case, but a lot of times we have, we have soft spots, we dig those out. So that's actually the, probably the most disturbance as far as access throughout the subdivision. If they got a big hole in the road, they really can't allow you to get through too easy even at poor on that time or whatever. But yeah, for the most part.
Is the whole, all the roads in the village being done this summer?
No, if you look at the map, so up here, there's pink, all in pink is phase two.
I'm just really concerned over what I drive.
Okay.
Wheel lock is being done.
We are.
We are. My wife's talking, you know, it's been for the rest of the summer. Thank you.
Yeah.
Only a bit of it.
Up to the village limit.
Right, we live in the village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. All of Maryland, Kensington Court, that part of the lock that's up through the village that goes up to the village.
And there'll be, it floods terribly. I'm sure you've seen pictures, my wife has sent pictures.
Agreed. The one change, the, Laura, what's the small cul-de-sac off of Laterp? I always forget. Saratoga. I always get those three confused. Saratoga Court, we have in the works. Taylor Avenue, Laterp Avenue is not part of our plan because that's a Racine County highway. We cannot fix that. Racine County has to fix that. So we have been talking to Racine County to let them know that we're doing this to see if we're on the plan to get it done. We just don't know if they've made the arrangements to actually make it happen this summer. So that is a possibility, but that is not before. That would be Racine County. And we know Laterp is in bad shape. We get emails all the time that that's not, that's not a test.
They were filling holes so smart.
Um, Sandish Lane was on the plan. It's going to be put out as a separate bid because we want to see if we have enough money to do all of that and sandish. If it's, if we don't, then we're going to wait and do sandish later. There was a sinkhole in front of the playground, just so you're aware, that they will be taking a look at because that absolutely needs to get fixed. But we may not do all of sandish at the moment because we were going to, we thought it was silly to not do Kensington Court off of Maryland and do sandish. So we thought, sandish isn't driven on nearly as much as some of the other roads, just so you're aware. So. And I did live in the village during phase one, and I don't remember it being a huge problem. Kelly lived in the village.
Yeah, she, there was a week or so. So you just kind of hope the weather is good, so that she parks and I'm kind of around. And I put a wagon in my car to haul stuff back and forth.
But it wasn't too much of a disturbance. Linda was, Linda lived in that area. I lived in that area, Kelly does. And it really, I don't remember it being like this huge headache. So just be aware that it's, it really won't be a huge headache. And if you have problems with parking, I think there was maybe one time that we had to park over here ever?
I didn't really park over here.
Okay. So I think it'll be fine. We will probably also put some information, Kendall and I were just talking, in the June newsletter, just with some reminders of things as construction starts, like he said, with the grass and things. Just a contact name if you have questions about anything. And always check our Facebook page and our village website. They'll all be there. So, okay, sorry.
No, thank you. One thing I thought of, too, was, you know, like you mentioned the funnels there. Yes, we're adding some inlets. This is some underdrain. It's an improvement. We, you know, without doing a huge improvement, we can't fix everything, but we're going to, you know, fix a lot of it and, you know, do the best we can. You have questions, yes, I have.
Going back to do so much with the beating up the roads, but as long as they're being dug up, we live in an older area. And has anybody looked into lead pipes for the water mains? I mean, Milwaukee and certain parts of Racine have had problems. Has that been looked into?
Great question, really is. Do we know that? I'll get, I will definitely look into that if we haven't already. I'm assuming we have.
It seems like the perfect time, as we have, I think so.
Right. We do it every, every Friday, Patty. People get involved with this, like, just yet. Anybody else have a question? Yeah?
Just knowing from gardening standpoint with the grass, like, are you guys going to be putting good grass seeds? There's not going to be, me? Sorry.
That's all.
Because there was some minor construction. My neighbor had natural gas put in, and the contractor that put in the gas, they just put in crackly seed in, and we kept having all these weeds. And we didn't care about it that much because we knew this was going to happen, but it, sorry.
No, that's a good question. And I don't have a better answer for you other than to be blunt or honest.
Yeah.
So if the same dirt goes back in, there's where the weed's coming from. The seeds don't have, the seed doesn't have weeds in it. So if you had weeds in your dirt, now a lot of people, the other part of that is a lot of people have sprayed their weeds, have a service come out and spray.
You do.
If you didn't, you'd have weeds, period. So I'm not saying that's what happened there. I just know what our, when we spec out a job, we're doing the construction management. You know, I know the seed they put in. You know, but that question, I, believe me, you're not, there's been that a thousand times. So it's a good question, but.
I don't think that came, I mean, we would have heard about it as a board with the first phase. And I don't think we heard anything. And I don't remember anybody.
The only, the only issue, and it wasn't having anyone do about it, but with, because it was new growth, and then in this, you know, with the spring, because it was still pretty fresh, and then, not even the snowplows, it was the Amazon trucks that were-
Trying, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, just, yeah, that if it's fresh dirt, it's going to, you know, like now, it's, I don't think there's much, I haven't noticed any big issue. I think I might maybe just park better. But I know there was a couple, like in that following spring, some big digits were either city apart or delivery truck or whatever, mail truck, whatever. But that's, nothing you can really do about that unless you stake off or something like that, but.
Is that something Ellie, we could do, like when they planted, put the stakes up? Because I know you guys want them removed.
I think that that's reasonable to ask. If you have new, if you have new planting, that you put up stakes. Stakes that are appropriate.
Well, yeah.
Not rebarring, not.
No.
We've had, we've had a couple that have been too short, and it's just, it makes us nervous when kids are riding bikes.
Well, yeah, exactly.
Or my husband ripped over one, like walking the dog. So just, I think that's reasonable to ask, that if you have dirt and you're planting grass, and I've seen people do that in the village, just when we don't have road construction, that's fine.
Yeah.
It's just the 50 million stakes that are, that are honestly popped up after the snowplow is gone. And I know it's because they're worried about rain and things, but it just looks terrible. So hopefully by April, everybody has at least taken out their stakes. And then if you have new growth and-
New growth.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think I left my stakes out just a little bit longer. But I haven't, this year, I haven't, it never occurred to me that you took, had a stake in the spring now. It just sounds bad.
One thing to add to that, too, again, I'm a homeowner. If they were doing construction in front of my yard, I would water myself. You take that as you want. You don't have to because it's not your job. But the more you can help that grass grow, just the better it's going to be. Really, you guys are the best watering, to be honest with you. I, one thing I thought of earlier that I mentioned, well, I guess they were discussing, access, again, if you know of anybody or yourself has an injury or something, somebody, himal, that kind of thing. So if there are people like that, we will account, contractor needs to accommodate that as well. So coordinate or communicate that with the village, and they can get that to the contractor. So-and-so needs to do the, you know, whatever the access issue might be. A lot of times it'll be built temporary. We just make sure it's very easy to walk, you know, if there's a wheelchair or something. Anything else?
Any more questions? We will certainly put this in, I will meet with Kapoor to make sure all points that village residents, since this is just a small few of you, that all points that were stated at tonight's meeting will go in the newsletter. But it'll probably be closer to the end of May, beginning of June. But again, look at the village website and the Facebook page for that information as well. So it'll go probably up there first, since we just put out a newsletter, and then this information will also go out in the newsletter. So if you do have resident or village neighbors that didn't make tonight's meeting, it was recorded, so they can certainly watch it. But then they are welcome to just keep an eye on the village website, village Facebook page and things like that. And they can always call the office. So.
So Ellie, you talked about Kensington Court taking preference over sandish. When will that decision be made?
We're going to see what our bids are first. And then if our bids are, our bid is low enough, then we're going to just add sandish lane in as a separate bid and see if we can do all of it. That would be our hope. Because we did come in under for the, for, you know, materials have gone up, things have gone up. My hope would be that we could do sandish and Kensington all in one.
But it appears like Kensington has preference.
Yeah. I'm sorry. It does. If we-
Would sandish get pushed to the third phase then, or what?
Yes, yes. But it could happen. I will keep you posted.
Okay.
I'll walk on over. Yeah.
I do have a question. During phase one, we had some issues with manhole covers not being flushed with the ground to add some storm drains.
Yep.
Also not being brought up to the right height, causing some sort of issues in people's front yards. Is that an issue we're going to face this time around?
Offhand, I don't know in detail. We will do what we can to avoid that for sure. I do know some of those issues were struggles because there wasn't a lot of distance from the edge of the road to the driveway or to the inlet that was in place. So I understand your concern. And the answer is no, but there might be some challenges out there that... What I would expect to have had, have had, happened in the first phase was instead of some of that just steep drops, it should have been longer distance, maybe not quite as deep. But, you know, instead of the straight down, I know a couple of them I don't think of.
Yeah, my thought on it is just how can we get ahead of that? So if you're having it against everything, issue afterwards, and it took us almost a year.
It took us longer than four, it took us, it was before I was president, and it just was fixed this, like in 2024, in October. And that was a long time. So we just do want to make sure we avoid that.
Yeah, and I think making a point of emphasis at the pre-construction meeting, that probably is our best bet.
And I do have pictures to show them what, this is what happened. And we just have to avoid this happening again, in case they need to see what we're talking about. Because as I said, I'm, you know, I'm not first in some of this, but I certainly will trust that it's taken turns. So.
Yep.
I have a question. Regarding the lights, during phase one, we had construction taking place, and it really jostled the lighting underground. We don't have above-ground lighting as far as the infrastructure and things we have underground. And a lot of the cables were cracked as a result. Has that been looked at at all as far as like how you can avoid having that happen? Because we had outages kind of continuously until we got it figured out.
Yeah. So yes, it's been, it's been talked about. What I believe is there's going to be a separate lighting project, if you will, to fix the lighting.
Yeah, well, we can't, we can't fix it now. We know this because of how expensive it is.
So to fix the repairs that are possible, again. And one of the reasons is locating them. We don't know exactly where they are. They were really close to the, some, in some phases, they were really close to the underdrain system. It was almost inevitable that they were going to hit those last phase. I wouldn't be surprised if there's some of that. And, you know, it's really, see how it goes and try to, yeah, well, deal with it.
I think the other thing is we just need to get Rick, or I C Electric on board to know that we may be calling them to fix this if it happens, because they are the ones that helped us the last time.
Do they have anything for us, as far as like what, any advice they could give us?
I could certainly call and ask them. I don't think we have yet. But if we, the one thing we know we've brought up at board meetings is replacing that whole light system, but that's a huge undertaking and really expensive. So I think just having a conversation with them at that time would probably be wise.
Yeah, I think coordinating with them, getting them, you know, even inviting them to the pre-construction meeting if they can make it.
Yeah.
Maybe they have some ideas as to what they saw in correcting phase one problems.
That, yeah.
That, and so they're aware that they might need to kind of fix up, you know, fix up and-
It'd be better to get ahead of it than not, so.
Yeah. Anything else? Nothing else. I thank you for letting me here. If you have any specific questions for us, for here or for you, anybody else have any questions?
As far as Laterp Avenue, Laterp Avenue hasn't had anything major done to it since 1964.
Oh, geez.
So if anybody wants to call the county or the, was it the city or the county?
It's the county.
It's the county. You might want to just call them and say, please consider doing that because, I mean, they're filling in holes now where cars have fallen in and never to be seen again because they, there's just so much. It's terrible in Laterp. So if anyone wants to call, encourage your neighbors, call the county.
And we can't wait till Ellie's party and all calls. Congratulations.
I'll be calling. Yeah. Go ahead.
When the road is done and the drains are all there and cleaned, who maintains the cleanliness of the drains, the covers along the edge where the water drains in? Who keeps them clean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, we don't have a, like a street sweeper or anything. What I noticed in the last phase, and I was just talking to Mike about this, there was a few, probably eight drains that still had mesh in them. And when Kapoor came out this past summer to look at some, some problems we had in Oak Tree Lane that we had, the sewer that was really low, I pointed out some, and he came out and cleared all of them. I'm pretty detail oriented, so I will make sure that all the mesh is taken out after this phase of the road, because that, I think, is really important. I saw one house on Oak Tree and South Elmwood Drive, and I just remember going, why is the mesh still in here? And it's really heavy to be, to like, for our maintenance- And it's really heavy to be, to like, for our maintenance guys to take out, but our maintenance guys don't really clean the drains or anything. But if you saw a lot of leaf collecting, it's because the mesh was still in there. And that is my wish that that does not happen again, as well as having some of those sewer grates so low or the pipes so low. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, there's always going to be runoff into there.
Right.
And too big to go down the drain.
Then I would think it would be the residents' responsibility if it's right in front of their house.
You would think so.
Yeah, I would hope so, yeah.
Ellie, I clean mine that's right next to my driveway.
Good job. Surprise, too. That's two surprises for you.
That is typically, you know, city or municipality ordinances say that the resident needs to get cleaned, basically. But it's not, I don't, I don't believe it so.
Well, just like when they have a real heavy rain coming and they say, hey, if you have weeds or anything in your grates, please go out and clean them so we don't have flooding.
Yeah, that's what you, you know, that's what they should do. If they're not, with, how do they get folks to do it? Does anybody...
Sometimes you must. Sometimes you must, if there's a, if there's a problem, we, we contact people. I know there's a couple of concerns we have, like the, we don't have any gutters in the village, but we do have gutters right where they come in. And I was just looking at Laura that I think we have had the city come and see if they can clean up the, the excess leaves and things there, and we can see if we have a contact. The city, the county's been kind of difficult. I feel like things have changed, that they used to help us with things and now all of a sudden they've kind of backed away. So there's also the, right by, right behind, by CBS, when, if you, if you're traveling south, that's another area we'd like to clean up. But it's been hard because they have a fence there and they can't cut down those trees, so.
That's the area where Heinrich's houses, anybody know Heinrich's houses? That area right there, that's the counties, they're supposed to take care of it. And it becomes overrun and it covers up our signs and it gets dirty. And we ask them, please come and cut it, clean it up. We can't see our signs and they refuse. Another thing you might want to mention.
Yeah.
They used to do pretty, pretty well, but they really backed off.
And I would say the last few years, yeah. Is there anything else? Thank you.
Yes, thank you guys for presenting today. Feel free to look at the maps if you want. So, call the meeting to order, it is 6:30 on March 13th, 2025. Stanford pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business is Julie Craig from Gordon Meyer and Company will present the 2024 Village of Elmwood Park audit. Julie, go ahead.
Okay, here, this is the letter. I'm giving her the letter to, you'll have to sign that.
Sure.
The one, okay. I'll read that back. So this is obviously your financial statements, but we did an audit on those financial statements. So it's always good, I think, to just do a run-through of all the numbers each year. So I'm just going to kind of walk you guys through it. After the cover page and the table of contents, starts the opinion letter. So the opinion letter, obviously, it's stating in those first couple paragraphs there that everything is fairly presented and materially accurate, which means that it's a clean opinion, which is what you're looking for. And the basis of the opinion in that third paragraph there is that this has been done under U.S. auditing standards. And then it goes on to your responsibility. And your responsibility is obviously to set up a system to capture things, whether it be fraud or error. And then it goes on to talk about our responsibility as the auditors. And we obviously use professional skepticism when we're doing this. We're trying to look and assess the risks for the village, as well as looking at the internal controls for the village, as well as looking at the accounting policies, and then we make judgments. And again, in this case, they were considered fairly presented and materially accurate, which is good. So there is some supplementary information, and that's your budget to actual, which I'll show you a little bit later. So then, as most governmental financial statements, unlike the for-profit world, in the governmental world, you do this thing called management discussion and analysis. And so there's a number of pages there. And that's this narrative form of the financials instead of just numbers. So it talks a little bit about what each of the statements are, gives you a sense of what they are. Usually there's a little bit of financial highlight in the beginning, and here's where, at the beginning, it says, you know, your net position increased 117,007.17. And that's on the government-wide basis. That's the one where the assets are capitalized and if there's any liabilities, they're on the books, right? Unlike your budgeting style, which is the fund balance basis. So again, goes on just to talk about what these statements are. There's some little, small comparative financials in there. And they just keep carrying through, talking about the debt on seven and eight, talking about, again, the capital assets. And then it gets to your main first core statement, the statement of net position. So that's that one, again, on the government-wide basis, and you can see there, it's a much bigger statement, right? You don't, you not only have the cash and the receivables, which you're probably used to seeing under the fund balance file, but you have that whole section there of the capital assets. And then down below, you can see how much you have in long-term liabilities versus current liabilities. So that's the main difference, the biggest differences between this set of statements and the others that you'll see shortly. The next page, and by the way, you can't see the 23 numbers on here, but if you were to look at them, you're really close. Like your total assets in 23 were 2,916,000 something. And then obviously for this year, they're 3,600,000, right? So really close. And if you were to look at the liabilities, very similar too, between the years. So the next page 10 is a government-wide approach to the reporting of the revenues and expenses. So they kind of work a little backwards where they start with expenses and they show what you get in for charges for services to come to a net, and then taking off the property taxes. So much different formatting than you would see in the for-profit world, obviously. And the positive, this is where you can see that positive 117,717. So this next set, right after, is that fund balance file that I was mentioning before. And that's, you can see much shorter, right? You're not seeing the capital assets, you're not seeing the liabilities. And when we look at the next page on the statement of revenues expenditures, and again, this is your budgetary basis, right? It's all those categories of revenues that you budget by, all those categories of expenditures that you budget by. And what I think is really helpful is if we just skip back from this page 12, all the way back to page 27, because that, what you're seeing on the front is also here in the back, but the back's more useful because it's more detailed and it shows you the budgets to the actuals, right? So you can see a bigger picture there. So good news-wise, right? Obviously, you budgeted 596, 494 in terms of the final budget for revenue, which you got 685, 247 in as your actual figures. And when you look at like this year-to-last-year type numbers, the rental, rent income was down a little bit, but the state share revenue was up, right? And everybody's kind of seeing that increase of the state share revenue. So then it moves over to the expenditure side of life in terms of all the typical categories, but then the fuller detail on them, right? How much was in general government versus how much was your Department of Public Works versus public safety versus debt? And the biggest shift there, I would say overall, yes, you were over from budget to actual, but that was largely that capital outlay that happened, which you're aware of, right? So, and that was planned in that regard. So I'll move back to the front then. If you look at page 13, if you're unsure how to get from one set of statements to the other set of statements, what's really nice is there's a reconciliation. So page 13 gives you the breakout of how to get from one fund balance number to the other net asset figure. And then page 14 shows you that other reconciliation on the income side of life. Page 15 is that fiduciary responsibility you have, because you're here, you're collecting taxes, right? They're not just your taxes, they, some of those go off to other parties. So as of that, just snapshot marker date, December 31st, you had collected 333,000 in, and then there was 669, that was in the receipt book. And the footnotes on page 16 just gets into this notion of all your responsibilities as a village, right? You have to track your net investment in capital assets, you have to track your restricted position. You also have to track your fund equity on the fund statements. So those are all those equity positions on the different types of statements. And that kind of carries on to two pages there. Then it goes on to talk a little bit about, you know, again, fun, on a government-wide basis at the top of 18, the fund balance style basis, right? Your main fund is your general fund, and then you have the fiduciary fund. So you don't have any enterprise funds, so you don't have a sewer district or any of those other things that sometimes you can see on a government set of statements. You're using the modified cash basis of accounting. You carry on down below about the budgetary basis on page 19. So these are all just general required disclosures, letting the reader know how you operate. And so again, on bottom of 20, how does the property tax cycle work? What's considered a cash and investment? And you guys just follow state statutes. The lives for depreciation on 21. For you as board members, 22, nothing was uninsured, so that's good news for you. That's just the risk of, is, is everything insured or is anything uninsured? And everything in your case, that year, was insured. Then page 23 gives you some detail on the capital assets. And that's where you can see in the, in terms of the building, there was those improvements that were done. And get detail on page 24 with regards to the debt. So there you can kind of see the future maturities on all the debt on the bottom of 24 and how it's going to carry out until 3038 is the final installment. And then that 25 has that whole new leasing footnote that was effective last year that was added to your financial statements. So you officially now seeing almost every page of your financial statements.
Julie, do we do 3038 or 2038?
Thirty, what, what? Page 31.
I'm like, I won't be here, that's...
Yeah, thirty, yeah.
I mean, I'm bored anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, look, 2034 to 2038 is the last.
Oh, it says 3038.
I'm like, that's a long time. Oh, yeah, it should say 2038. Oh, my God, I gotta tell that to you. That's so funny. Oh, my God, please take that to a...
I was like, I don't have to worry about 3038, I'm pretty sure none of us will.
I won't be on the board. I might still be getting social security.
That's hilarious. Oh, my God, I would tell them, she'll be like, oh, I miss that.
That's great. It just took me a second, I was like, wait a minute, okay. That was like, that's to make sure we're all paying attention, that was what that was there.
So any other questions from you guys?
I don't think so.
No, no?
Okay, everything's going the way it's supposed to go?
Yes, yeah.
We're all down, it's good, it's good.
And this, this is our, this is our letter from, I need that one back signed.
I need it signed.
Do you do?
Okay, good.
This is the one for me to you, just saying that we had no disagreements, there were no outside parties consulting.
I, there's a separate place for...
Oh, you're getting a key for the signature and who sent it the other time? Yeah, so the board treasurer?
That's me.
That's, okay. But what was I going to say, you know, I was, I was trying to think. Oh, so the management letter, most of it's in standard language. And the good news is, again, there were no disagreements on outside parties consulting. We just didn't make that recommendation at the end about just some cybersecurity training. The biggest issue these days now is that, you know, like a spam email, you want to open or not open, and sometimes you can just do some education with her, which are good for that, right?
Yes. Any comments?
Yes. Yeah. So I think that's it.
All right, thank you, Julie. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Oh, thank you.
Um, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Moving on to public comment and input, is there any public comment or input at all? Okay. Can I have someone consent you a meeting minutes from February 13th and February 14th, please? Can we make a motion to consent to be adjourned at minutes from, where were we? Perfect. First by, second? First by Stein, second by Woodick, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, so pass. Moving on to reports, I'm going to get to the sheriff because he's been patiently waiting. Sheriff, would you like to report something?
Uh, you guys already have this?
Um, Kendall, did we, or Letyria, did we get it from the sheriff?
You guys do have it.
Yes, you've seen that last year.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, you've all seen it. Okay, I can read it if you want, otherwise if, if not, if you guys have any concerns or questions or anything, I can...
How's been the, um, we had, I called the sheriff's department myself because our car was broken into.
Okay.
In my driveway.
How recently was that?
Uh, two weeks ago, on Tuesday, so just over two weeks ago.
Okay.
And I did contact a few homeowners, and there were actually probably about three or four maybe total, including us. Nothing taken from our car, and I don't, from what I heard from other people, just rifling through and probably looking for things we didn't have in our cars. And I just, there was also an incident earlier this week, as I called both of you. Like, we just had a lot of solicitors, somebody going to somebody's front door that she didn't recognize. We still don't know, it didn't seem super suspicious. It was just weird. But just, it was like late, it was a mom, her husband home, it was very random. We don't know why he was there, but just if you guys could keep making, that was at like 7:45 at night. So I think it was, I think maybe he just had the wrong address.
Yeah.
Because I saw the video.
He was soliciting a product or something?
No, he didn't have anything on his hands.
There was no logos on his shirt.
It was just a little odd.
Could be that sometimes, so obviously people are, they're casing places under the guise of whatever.
Right.
Yeah, please call those in.
Okay.
We already have lots of extra tensions in Elmwood Park that we try to focus on when we're not busy. We're focusing on the stop sign enforcement and speed enforcement that you guys have called in multiple times. We try to check the buildings as much as we can. And there's a whole slew of extra tensions I don't have in front of me.
Perfect, but that's great, if you guys could just come through. I think the, the break-ins happened about three in the morning.
Yeah.
Because we got them on our RAPM.
Yeah, if there's someone specific, I mean, make sure whoever it is interacts with them, calls them in, use the description, and we can come and talk to them.
Okay.
And figure out what they're actually doing and stuff.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions for the sheriff at all?
No.
Great, excellent.
In regards to your break-in, I'm sure as a detective, then contact if you're ready.
Yes, I already talked to him that day, it was all taken care of. I just wanted to make sure we're still, it just, it seems like this happens probably every time the weather gets warm, the kids coming out.
Yeah, it'll start picking up.
Coming right out over the bike path, like, let's see what they've got over and over.
I had them climb in my car window and left like...
Oh, I remember that.
Yeah. I hope he enjoys the change in McDonald's french fries.
Unfortunately. We try to be in many places as we can, but there's only so many of us to go around. We're a county of 200,000 people, so.
Yes, perfect, thank you so much. I appreciate your help.
Okay, have a good night.
Okay. My report, I think everybody knew that we had the Christine County governmental, I forget what the last two C's it was, um...
Oh, goodness.
I always forget too.
The meeting.
The RCICC meeting, when all the Christine County governments come together, Dover, North Bay, Windpoint, Caledonia, everybody came here. Good job to Letyria, I think it was actually really positive that we hosted. They were here in the village hall. Letyria did all the setup, she, they typically provide food, so we had some food out. We had some long presentations for the, the new facility going up, the mental health facility going up on Taylor Avenue. Do you know where that is, where the poor Brandon Lumber used to be? They're putting in, right?
On the street, yeah.
Correct, so we had that presentation. It was just, it was really great, Ralph Maliki, this was his first meeting to attend with all of us. And it was really great, it was received very, very well. We had a couple of members in audience, Flora came, Ernie came, and Ernie spoke up a little bit. And it was, it was just really nice to have them here. And they even said, I haven't been in Elmwood Park in years. So I was pretty proud of you for making that happen, even though I was like, why did you volunteer? Because it was a lot of setup. But I thought, I just thought it went really, really great. So kudos to us. From that meeting, I started talking to Letyria and even my husband. Charles came and set up a TV, a projector screen for them, as well as projector. And something that came out, as I'm looking around here, I know we have money set aside that we set aside to update these buildings. And we still, we haven't really gone through it all. And one thing I was thinking was, wouldn't it be beneficial to have a TV in here for when we rent out the hall? Because we do rent out the hall a lot. And we had a first birthday party in here. Wouldn't it be beneficial for parents to be able to hook up a slideshow of their, their child? Or if it's a funeral, would it be beneficial? Because we have had, what do you, what are they called sometimes? You call them something? Yeah, exactly, like, I, that they, you know, just something to think about. I don't know if it's necessary, but it might be nice, because we also, when we want to use a TV here for a presentation, we, we have a TV, but it's not necessarily on a stand, and it makes me nervous every time. So it's just something to think about, and I think it would bring more attention to like, oh, yeah, I want to rent it out. So it's just something to think about, and I think it would bring more attention to like, oh, yeah, I want to rent it out. The other things I was thinking, I wish we could make, maybe paint this room. I don't know. I just feel like it needs, the bathroom definitely needs a paint job. I was talking to Ernie recently about the stove, which makes me nervous. People do use a stove. And Ernie's like, you could use that as a warming kitchen. I said, we do. We do like the stove. But he said, you could probably look, and we could talk to Mr. Scaramino on Taylor to see who he contacts for a commercial stove to replace the one that's back there. Because I feel like that maybe needs replaced. I don't know what you guys think. I just think that you brought up the kitchen before and replacing some of those things. I just thought if we could keep it in the back of our mind, and if anybody has ideas of making this look, I just feel like the white is so white. Could we make it warmer in here? But it wouldn't look better? Could we make one wall a different wall? This is a different color. I just, you know what I'm saying?
You know my opinion on this space.
I know. And I just, I, I'm not good at that, so if you have any ideas, I don't know how much it would cost, but I do feel like we could make it a little bit friendlier in.
More welcoming.
Yes, and anything we could do to make that happen.
Agreed. Regarding the kitchen, if the kitchen's up to date and to code and all that kind of stuff, you can rent it out.
I know, and Jeff's brought that up to me too. Yeah. So it's things to think about.
Food trucks and so on. They have a commercial kitchen sometimes to prepare some of them.
I have a couple bakers that.
That too.
They need a kind of.
Bakers, yeah, for sure.
They just use it once a week to make other.
Just things to think about, to just bring in more revenue and just make the space more inviting. I've had residents even say to me, like, how can you make that space look even better, so it's even more inviting when you have baby showers? Or wedding showers or whatever. Also, the golf cart and the maintenance team, John Leonard talked to me, it's going through some problems. And he brought it over to Pincala, and it would be a lot to fix, and the parts are pretty old. So we're also thinking we may need to get a new, instead of a golf cart, which I was thinking, Ken, Ken, that might actually be getting rid of his golf cart, which I was like, maybe we could just replace. But he was like, actually, like an ATV, like a mini dump truck would actually be better. So he showed me one that was like five to six thousand dollars. That may also be where our money goes, but I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to look into that and have a, you know. We're going to have to vote on that one. Okay, a couple other things. I, I saw your list, and I didn't get a chance to look at it, so if I talk over you, you'll only see the. I don't think. We've had some problems with dogs and leashes, people not walking their dogs on a leash. One tenant in particular, we're going to have to send him a letter and probably a fine. It's time. The one that's on North, uh, North Elwood. And we're probably going to have to tape somebody at the door, because it's, it's, it's still happening, and they don't, he does not care. The problem is he's not a resident. She's the resident. It's, it's, um. He doesn't live there, but he walks her dog without it being on a leash. And we've talked to him. He's got two letters now, and it's, we're just going to have to find her. If we do find her, does it go on her text?
If she doesn't pay it.
Okay, because I know she's not well, but I guarantee he's not going to take care of it for her. And we'll be talking to him, so. But there was another couple that was walking their dog. I don't think they live in the village. I think they live on Wheelock, but on the outskirts of the village, and they have walked their dog. I actually got in my car in my pajamas. Yes, I did, because they walked by my house, and their dog was like ten feet behind them, and then they walked by again, same thing. And I said, this is just not happening. So Sunday morning, I'm in coat on and my sweatshirt, my pajama pants, and I drove out, like I was going on an errand. And I'm like, hey, you guys need to have your dog on a leash. And they said, it is on a leash. And he pulled his electric dog collar thing out of his pocket. And at first I was kind of taken aback, and he said, it's an electric leash. And I was like, okay. And then I, I drove off. He has a shock collar, so I drove away and pretended I was going on an errand and like drove around for about ten minutes until I came back, because I didn't want them to see me. And then I told Charles, and he was like, that is not, and I said, I agree, but I didn't, I didn't expect him to say that. So they walked by our house again the next Sunday, and I was not home, and Charles walked out and said, you've got to get your dog on a leash. He said, I'm sorry, we have two dogs. If our dog gets out of the yard, he's coming after your dog. What are you going to do? You're going to be mad at us because our dog, who likes to play a little rough, is going to come after your dog. So we put it in the newsletter. If it's a, if you see them, speak up. I, I got their name, but I've looked on the, the list, and they, they, I can't find them on our, our address list. So I, Charles said something, and I have seen them maybe with the leash, but the, the problem is the dog is walking like way far behind them and pooping on everybody's lungs. It's a black doodle.
Oh, I've seen that. In fact, they go down.
They live by you, don't you?
I've seen them, and then, but they've had a leash the last couple of days.
Good, because Charles yelled at them.
Okay. Because I said to Rob, I said, oh, they finally got their leash.
Yeah. I don't know where they live, so if you know where they live.
I'll stalk them.
Yeah. I think they do live off of Wheelock. I think they live near you. But I cannot figure out where they live. And Rob and Terry, who, who don't live in the village, but I know that live on Wheelock, said they're pretty sure they live across the street or nearby. So Rob and Terry Krueg, um, you know, Bobby Krueg's son. She's like, I think he, they live over here.
Quick question.
Yes.
Do, do, do the ordinance say something about a physical, actual leaf, leash rather, as opposed to?
Yep.
There's some, I mean, it's, yeah.
Because you can call.
If I'm locking a makeup on a dog, if that leash comes after my dog.
Yeah.
I carry.
And I don't think.
This dog's going to be done.
I don't think this dog, I don't think this dog would come after another dog, but I can see my dog getting agitated.
Oh, right.
And the dog, like.
Yeah, this dog does seem to be well trained, because like.
He's very well trained.
I saw that, like, they get up by Taylor, and the dog just dead stops by him. So I'm like, because both dogs, they go right.
Yeah, and they have a shock collar in their pocket, and I'm sure that they're well trained, but my concern is.
Yeah.
Another dog.
We don't know that.
There's just too many, too many concerns. So keep an eye out.
Sure.
Feel free. Charles told us about you. Yeah, you can.
I compare with Barb, that dog has been on a leash. Good, he's for the last week.
So hopefully it's cleaned up. Laura, if you could help me.
Sorry.
Let us know who cleans up the curbs. Is it Christine County that we contact?
For the curbs?
The curbs. Do you remember?
I don't remember.
Okay. City, do we contact and see if the city can come?
Who would have to have that coming, because it's coming at.
Well, I'm thinking about when we come into the village too. When we come into, into Maryland, not the village, but when you come into Maryland, those curbs right there are just so, did we have anybody ever do that? No? It was just like the resident? Okay.
I've seen the streets where we've been there. I mean, maybe months and all the years.
I've never seen one.
Yeah. But stocks are in Maryland, obviously.
Well, maybe we may put, you know, just ask, but they could come on.
I just wondered. Okay. All right, that's, that's my report, and that's pretty much all I have, so just, I would really like any ideas you have, if we could get prices of, of things, and if we could do anything, I think it would make it worth, well, worth it with how much this hall is rented out. So, all right, moving on. Hankel, do you have anything to report?
I don't know.
Johnson?
Uh, just talked with Luteria on the gazebo. Do, size-wise, I mean, do we have anything?
Yep, so I have this folder for you, and we've been looking at it twenty by twenty.
Okay.
Those are just with representative, yeah, came to look at everything, and so those numbers are pretty accurate.
And this, I mean, this is what we're kind of, are now, are we looking for like?
That's what we're trying to.
Yeah.
Or something like this.
Like something like that could be better, because then you have good shelter and everything.
Improving, right?
Yeah, you can still just put outside trainings.
For sure.
That's nice, have a little like patio.
Yeah. And you put the race lights up.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that was.
So I got a guy, so, yeah.
You got a guy.
You know, and his, his main, you know, he asked the other day about, you know, I would assume that, you know, we would just let him, you know, go in a minority, whatever, instead of us grabbing all the material and stuff too.
Yeah.
So I'll have him go it both ways with pricing. Like, you get all materials. Louis used him in the past for his thing. I've used him for my funds for my dad. I mean, all kinds of stuff. And he'll work from seven in the morning till it's dark, and he's very, very meticulous, so.
You also talked to this Mike Stone. Do you have anything to say about him from Thunder Road Pavement? No? He didn't contact you? Maybe don't worry about it.
Okay.
He said he talked to Brian?
In the email, it says that he just spoke with him.
From, it was a road pavement service. He was going to come tonight to introduce himself.
Oh, that's true.
I didn't talk to him.
He talked to some other Brian. That's not part of our board. Okay.
Did?
Is that it, Brian? Anything else?
No. Oh, wait, so yeah, back to, we're going to come over on Saturday, just so you can kind of see the area. So is that, yeah, it's in here and then too? Okay, cool.
Great.
He's going to call me tomorrow and let me know what time and stuff, so.
Okay, awesome. Trustee Ruth?
Um, I just had a phone call from someone. She didn't indicate who she was from or where she was from, but she wanted to put billboards in the village, and she was wondering what our zoning.
That's off, even after they're. Where, where should I put these billboards?
In the village, just like she didn't say. She just wanted to know if they were allowed. I, I handed that off to Luteria. I don't know if you got a hold of her.
So I kind of talked to Kendall about it, and he didn't think they would be doing it, so I just wanted to wait to see what I could.
Yes, I think maybe coming like from the administrator, that might have a little bit more power behind it, and so, so.
Is that like the larger, like signs that they use for elections and stuff like that?
No, those, those are just like political signs. These are like the billboards that you see how.
By like.
They advertise the billboards.
Well, now let's think. Let's think. You can put your birthdays up there. When it's Linda's birthday, we say happy birthday, trustee Judy. I guess you don't care what you don't ask for, so. That is just a weird.
It's a weird one.
I saw that, and I was like, what are you talking about? Okay, so yes and no. No, thank you, but thank you for, for contacting us. No. Trustee Stein, I'm sorry, I'm not that. No, I'm not paying over for it. Trustee Judy?
Um, just to go over the fence real quick, they are in the newsletter. Thanks, you guys, for putting those in there. Easter egg hunt is the first one up on April twelfth, followed by this plant swap. Thank you for putting that together. Which is May thirty-first. That day, we discussed maybe doing a little bit of cleanup around the buildings and splitting up some plants that have gotten a little bit out in the end. Tunes on Taylor kicks off on six twenty-four. Rubbish sale the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth is tentative, obviously. National Light Out is already in the books, followed up with our car show. That went live on Facebook today, so we might start getting, you know, some of that I put over in the same as last year. Third annual Turkey Truck is going to come up on the twenty-seventh, and the Christmas party. Do you, can she add anything for the car show?
Is there anything you want to say, Kelly? Sure, I'll, I'll love it. Except I have to get working on it, and I need flyers.
I have no flyers this weekend.
Okay, great. And if you guys know any local businesses that would like to sponsor or donate for a raffle, let me know. Perfect.
State farm right there.
Please.
I have a question about the rubbish sale.
Yes.
The thing I'm wondering with the construction stuff, you know how it is when we're not doing the construction, and people are breaking because they're parking on their lawn and that, and that. Is that going to be a real problem? I mean, should we think about maybe canceling it, or?
That's, it was a tentative date. I've had people ask when they're doing, when are they, when are we having the rubbish sale?
Because so much of it is on the east side.
Yeah.
I just worried that we're going to have people not being able to get by because there's another big equipment piece that you hear.
I know, I hear it.
It's just like, ooh.
That's really just up to, what did you say? It's canceled this year? It doesn't matter to you? I have a lot of junk in my basement.
I'll, I can run out of here. Ten by ten. Ten by ten spaces, hard to box today.
The only other option is you could do it on, like, the grounds here, if you wanted to have something where people would bring, I mean, that's.
That'd be a pain in the butt.
But, but I mean, if you really, really wanted to, like, there's some neighbors that, like, I've got to unload this stuff. You could.
I say we still do it, just someone's down on one of the roads that has an issue.
But you have to go through the roads to get to the back.
So I don't know. Let's, let's think on it and see. We've got enough time if we still have, we can cancel if we need to. Let's just think on it, and Linda would, yeah.
Or maybe even into September, where the snow's pretty good back.
We could wait.
Yeah, do it in the summer.
Shoot, I can sell all Nolan's things. He's going to be gone.
Seen it all out.
Like, why would you all come? I said, well, you don't live here anywhere. You don't.
I turned it into this one.
But that's, that's not a bad thought of doing it in September. Okay. I will, let's think and see what people say, because people have been asking, and it might be easier to do it in September and let people know ahead of time. Okay, that's a good thought.
Like the first price September is the car show.
Yeah, and then you could also advertise a car show.
Okay, kind of smart to do the same weekend as the car show.
Oh, that would actually be really good.
Throw way more people in the neighborhood.
Oh. Look at this, meeting of the minds. I'm loving it. This is amazing. Okay, trustee Widdick, anything to report?
Nothing.
Administrator Shaw, you have a blank sheet list.
Can I, just one question real quick. So paving or pavers, that's going to be the.
Oh, it's concrete.
It's already up.
That's what it is, all right? Oh, okay, because that is on here. So then, how big is that slide?
Um, it says twenty by twenties, David.
Oh, there, it's already, so we're just going over that.
Yeah.
You just have to build it and stick it to it.
Well, yeah, he's probably going to have to do, you know, go on the outside of the dome, because you're going to be actually, you know, playing a dollar for a pad and stuff, so.
Yeah, so pavers are, were just poured like a year ago.
Yeah.
It's, they're nice.
Very cool. It's going to be way under that price.
Yeah, that's really hefty. So for my notes, we did go ahead and renew the contract with Randy Savaglio to lease out the, the space in Village One, so we're still working with that. It's about three fifty a month, so we're hoping to get it in there. He's very optimistic, so we're hoping to be at full capacity, even though we're really jam-packed now, so that'll be the last space really. So we're looking forward to that.
We paid him the first month card for the tent.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's just one space, one space, that's all we have left.
Mm-hmm, and that'll be three fifty.
That's awesome.
And we kind of debated who we were going to move for, because it's been about a year, but we went ahead and extended it for six months. So he's thinking springtime is good for people to start coming out looking for business space. So we're just hoping to get that filled. And then for April first, I am renewing two leases, so that'll be Dylan Ford, the church, and then a therapist in Village One, so they both are renewing. So that's good news. And then the lease, I did add a clause on there about the mailbox keys, because I just borrowed them out. It was a little bit of a mess, but we retrieved most of the keys from the post office. So I.
We were going to put something in the leases that said, okay, that if you don't return them.
She did. That's what she said.
Yep, so I put in there that it would cost forty dollars, so I have. Oh, should we go right?
I think you go higher.
How much did it cost?
I will have to double check, but it was pretty hard to pick the keys. And it was very expensive to rekey.
Yeah, so.
I think so too, around that, because it's not just the cost is the cost. You know, we got to think on how she put into it.
Okay.
So when I think a hundred dollars makes a little bit more than it can.
Okay.
If you're having a post office and all that stuff.
Yeah, and it seemed like, it seemed like a lot of people didn't return these in the past, so I think that's why the issue was there in the first place.
Every time we talk to Luteria, she's just like, well, I'm working on these damn keys. She's like, I'm going to get it done this week. I'm getting it done.
I don't call, but it's getting done. It was, it's, the last board meeting, I was able to talk directly to the post man, and he was able to get the supervisor on the right way. When I was calling, he wasn't, no responses. So it was really direct, and when I came to office, Kendall was able to put, call the keys on my desk, so I had a bag of keys, so it was nice. Yes. So, yeah, I put that hundred dollar fee for lost keys, and then I just kind of put what mailbox they've been assigned in that language in the lease. Uh, next thing, Sidelimites has been here. They did start working on those weeping holes. They are in the final stages of it. So I'm thinking about like a week or two at the most.
Because, you know, they covered up all those weeping holes.
Yeah.
And at first they're like, oh, it's not a big deal. It's not a problem. And then they're like, actually, yeah, we have to fix that, so.
They would make it on that one. On the leases, do, are they giving an increase of three percent every year? Is that still?
The one percent.
It's, it was too much. It really, we were like, people were getting really upset, and I understood, like, it was, the three of us actually talked, and for some tenants that have been here for a long time, it was for cost of living, it just seemed like a lot. And I know Chris brought that up, but it was, it, it just didn't seem fair to be like, okay, now you're going to have to, you know, it's just going to keep going up, so we, we did change that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And like the 1% for people that's already here pretty much, but like we give like a new tenant maybe a 3% and they're here for like a year. But like everyone that's been here has been here for some time except for the new tenants.
Yes, and I think too, didn't we talk about if they were willing to sign a two-year lease, we would maybe not even be.
Right, right.
And actually with like the God Industries, that's renewed for April, I am going to ask them, do they want to do a little bit more? Cause they have been doing one-year leases over and over, but they've been here for a while. So that'd be nice if we can get them locked in for two or three years. And they have been awesome, so. They did have some questions about putting clothes on the doors. They were having issues with the doors not closing. But we kind of came to the resolution that they would, if they need to install things, they could just ask us. We haven't had that issue with other tenants as much, so. And then the next thing for the new events, I may want to get an Easter bunny here, like somebody in the costumes for the Easter bunny event. So that's what I'm looking into. And then for the plant swap, I am, I do work with people at the Racing Urban Guard Network, so I could get them in by a tube. A lot of, I love bees a lot, actually. So I love plants. So hopefully we can get other people involved, organizations, and get a little bit bigger. And I was thinking maybe if we can do like a little fee, like $2, $5 to get in, I'd be willing to raise money too.
Can you do a donation thing too? Sometimes people will just. For more money.
Yeah, that might be an idea. So.
See how this first year goes and they get in there.
Do a donation this year. And then we'll be talking about the Full blown Smith contract and building issues. I did call for another book pickup, because there's a littler finding dollars for me again. There wasn't any furniture, but like more like garbage bags.
Lot of garbage back there.
Yes, and then Nate, he handles all the accounts. He said that he wouldn't charge us extra or anything like that, but maybe send a letter to the businesses just to make them more aware to like, maybe I could get Mark to send a letter to all those businesses, so we can kind of really get to the bottom of it.
Is, isn't CBS responsible for that?
That party?
Okay. Cause then I don't think it's really something that the village simply clean up after, because then they're going to think, oh, geez, we don't have to.
Exactly.
So we have tried to count them out and just they don't do anything.
Well, we'll know if we start finding.
That might not be bad.
We have talked about that.
Let's start giving them a little notice. Okay, this isn't taken care of. We're going to find it.
How much is the full pickup cost to be?
Do you know up here?
I don't.
But still.
It's a cost.
Right, I mean, is it like, is it like $200? Is it?
It's in the hundreds, yeah.
The hundreds? Then I would say.
And this will be the fourth one.
If it's going to be, if it's like $400, maybe a 15, 20% upcharge on that because of the hassle of having to get it done and.
We could just send a certified letter to CBS and sell them that every time that we are having to do this, we're going to add it to their property tax.
And maybe, maybe we could send the past bills too.
Right, exactly.
I would be a close, should we send the past, like, I suppose to prove how much it costs, but I think you would just say, moving forward, moving forward.
This is what we had to do, moving forward. Cause we have it on record, yeah.
But then just find them.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do buy this and I would just find, I'd give them a good find too. I would say $50 now. It's like, okay, this is going to be $250. Find and take care. And we're not going to claim that, but you're going to pay this.
Yeah.
I love story for their costs and that information.
So the next book pickup is actually Monday, the 17th, so.
But I don't think we need to.
That's, no.
I would think John needs to go over there and clean that up, because there's not a lot of furniture, furniture. He's just over there.
It's like boxes.
It's just barbed wire. Yeah, like broken furniture that was like bookcases that were all cut out, but it's just like.
I guarantee it's from that furniture.
Oh, yes.
Those apartments over there.
I don't know.
It's like, as soon as it's not melted, it's like boom, right there.
Well, and then if we start finding them, maybe they'll actually look upon themselves to do something to help prevent people from just jumping right there.
This is the fence line, that's right.
Yes, that means that's like.
So CBS, they have to clean the fence line?
Thank you.
That's a property.
It goes all the way down the recce hill, past that empty line. And then what about like behind that building, it kind of comes to that corner and then it turns through on that little alley? That's really bad too.
Really? I didn't see that.
Oh, yeah, that's really bad. Cause I sneak through that base.
Sometimes you'll pay them.
And then you go drive around with a hole.
Oh, yeah, so I have a whole check.
Slipping our own hands.
And one is filled with rain. It's like, ooh, I don't know.
I don't remember that one. But I feel cross with them.
Uh-huh, that's terrible. I wonder if we could contact the apartment complex, just say, let them know, I don't know.
I don't know.
No, not going to work? Okay.
Is it something that, so the book pickup, do they go every book pickup and then clean that?
No, only when the area falls in. And it's quarterly. Okay, it's quarterly, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I was just thinking to be like, but they don't quarterly. If it's not, if this isn't picked up by whatever time it is, like you know, try to do these a lot of times, it's not picked up by then.
Do you do email?
Sorry, we're, we're down calling it here for it.
Do we even have to, or just that we say, hey, if we get to a point where it looks bad?
This is what's going to happen.
This is what's going to happen.
It goes really bad.
Have you had a secret contact?
No.
But you have.
I've, I've looked at it.
Yeah, because they have, but between the, every.
I don't think they care.
Yeah.
Make whatever.
We're going to.
And I don't think CBS is such a big company that they're just like, yeah, let's make the lease space does. They don't care. Which is like, until they start realizing, wow, why are we in charge of this?
What a million.
And I was in charge, like, what is our charge? Yeah, like, what is this?
What's this for?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes.
Okay, back, back, back to class. Back together.
So we will be working on the monument for Kirk, not, not the school, Kirk and Bresson. They're scheduled in the next few weeks. So I did sign the contract. It was $75 for installation.
Have you seen it?
I haven't seen the brick.
It's very nice.
It's right in the office.
Okay.
I think you did bring it up.
It's very nice. It's on the fireplace or something over it, just to reject it, but it's.
Really quick push. His daughter asked when that was going to happen. I still have to know, but you know, I'll let you know. So if you ever let me know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's coming really soon now. They need some stuff back in the area.
Okay.
Very excited about that. And then the next thing, I know I kind of just saw this mentor here, but me and Ally, when we talked with them, had our meeting, we did talk about maybe not doing the whole standard thing, getting to that housing code area.
I, and I brought that up.
Oh, okay.
So they're going to look at that for sure. He's actually, they're going to come next week, just so you're aware.
Yeah.
Not Mike, but the other gentleman, I cannot think of his name. He was the first one I met. He and Kelsey, what is her name? No, Kylie. Kylie, Kylie are going to come through. We met with Kylie soon a while ago. They're going to come through and just take a look at the village. They're going to take a look at Saratoga.
Is this you?
They're going to look at where the, that sinkhole is and then look at Santa Shlade and just see if there's, you know, how things look. And what we're planning on doing, so. Yeah.
Did Capor develop order links at that time that they could talk about, you know, how deep things were or are they worth?
Remember. I think so, yes.
Somebody, somebody just told us, so that they would have ideas.
Yes, and they do, yes, they're definitely working on those things. He just wanted to take a look. So I don't think, I think they're getting their eyes on where everything is again. Just familiarize themselves. But I don't think they're doing it in a measure of anything.
What is it?
So I'm sure we'll have another discussion about that.
Was it five years ago?
I feel like that.
Cause that's what he said. I'm like, was it that? It doesn't seem that long ago. No, there's no way.
Cause COVID was five years ago right now. So it's probably.
Yeah, yeah, because the elevator upgrade was 2021.
Okay.
And then we're going to talk about the Full blown Smith issue, but I did reach out to Mark today and talk to him over the phone. Cause sometimes it's better to talk over the phone, because we've had several issues in the past. He hasn't heard anything new about the sewer agreement, so that's just kind of left the way it was. And then we just, he gave me a little more detail about Full blown Smith. I did let him know that our emails seem to be blocked. So like, oh, it's not the termination letter, because it comes out because of the error, but we did get it.
An email from today?
Yeah, saying late, it's a late fee for the last bill. He did express that since they didn't challenge us or anything, when we did terminate and we had a birdie thing, that they probably, that's like an admission of Husky and Price Couch. And he did say that could just withhold.
So let's talk about that in there, because it's on here. So we'll talk about that in the next, yeah, so hold on to this.
And then Neil, with State Farm, did stop into the office today. He did inquire about the trim being painted. So when he signed his lease, he did ask that we painted, paint the chip and paint.
Outside, right?
But, yep. And then Terry, he did go over there and like scrape some of it off to make it look a little bit neater. I don't know if you all seen the sign.
Yeah, he has it up. Yeah, he's got that up there. He's got his name and the little state farm and those in the grass, they got it staked out with the, for the.
Top tiddies, yes, right.
So they're going to, are they going to put up the table sign there?
I think so.
And then he has the one.
I think in the week, he, he's a, that's a good tenant for a sign.
He was good about today.
He's a really nice guy.
He was actually in the band, so he kind of expressed that they do secondhand music band, because he's interested in tunes on the air, but he can get involved. He plays the drums, his wife is an excellent singer.
He wants to have State Farm in. I don't know.
He really wants to get involved with the band, so.
He's very nice.
Yeah. And then the last thing I have is Taylor complex improvements, and that's kind of picking back and off what Ellen was talking about, like the TV and the paint, everything they were doing and then moving some of the plants and spreading them out, things like that. So any other ideas? Just let me know. We're not going to add that to the list.
Let's go now with building number five. Have they finally gotten their occupancy permit and they paying rent?
Yes, they're going to be paying rent. They have some issues with that. They keep asking about the kitchen though, a lot. It's quite expensive. I don't, I'm not sure if we got the occupancy permit, but we did take care of everything on our end and they haven't brought it back up. I did ask them last time to talk to their secretary. I did ask about it, but they hadn't done it yet.
And I'm really having a hard, the kitchen is just like, it's hard to go in there and you see the kitchen and it isn't, it is not in the greatest shape. But that's a big job and I need to sit down, he doesn't speak English, so I might have sit down with the secretary and say, what can we do to make this work? For you and for us, but getting the whole kitchen, I think is just a lot. But there's some pipes that come through the countertop and I just feel like you can't just take out the cabinets without taking out the countertop. Terry really has to go over there with me and we just, there have been so many other little things going on and now he, I think he's on vacation for a little bit, right? So maybe over spring break, maybe I'll try and get over there just to look at it again and see if we can help them, but not give them all, you know what I mean? Not do all of it on ourselves, but can we compromise and come to? That's what I'm wondering.
They had a one-year lease too, so.
And I was like, do we want, we were like, what if they don't stay? And then we do this whole kitchen.
What if they do half of it? That would be more of an incentive for them to stay. And if they do leave, well, then you got a new kitchen for the next winter.
We could make a condition that you sign a three-year lease and we'll pay for it, correct?
Yes, and that lease is up July 1st, so let's come right up.
I think that sounds.
That's not a bad reasonable suggestion. I just.
Read a commitment from them in order to put extra money.
And look at it and go, oh my gosh, this is a lot. Cabinets. And I know they said, well, you don't have to replace it all, but I like, if you don't replace it all, then you're just going to have empty space. I was like, I don't know. So.
I don't know if Brian's like, could help out with that.
Is he good with?
Oh, I did ask.
He's an outside guy. I mean, I can bring it up to him, but he's.
The other one, I could ask, I could ask Don.
Yeah, he's got a guy though, too.
I could ask Don Bloom, who lives right near us.
Yeah.
But it can't be expensive, Don Bloom.
Yes.
Because he is really good at doing that. He put cabinets in my father-in-law's house. Tad bought them already. We don't want to go like these super expensive, but, yeah.
It's something decent.
So.
That will help a lot with the future project too.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is that it?
Yes, that is my report.
Treasurer's report? Is there anything you want to say, Kendall?
No, we had the audit and she spoke and it seemed like everything went well. They had a lot less questions this year than they did last year, but I don't know. Thank you for what you're doing on that, because years back.
Well, she was looking at records from when Ernie was president. We're like, can you just look at 2023? We're like, why are you looking at like records from when Ernie was president? This makes no sense.
Go back like to the 2015, 24.
Oh, that was perfect, yeah. So, okay, moving forward, anything, nothing else, Kendall?
No.
Discussion on possible approval of Ernie Rossi for construction inspector for phase two of the roads project. You got this email. So Ernie sent this to me today. I met with Ernie last Tuesday. She, she had to take a good seat at the doctor, otherwise she would have been there with me. She's like, I feel like it's, it was pretty last minute that Ernie and I found the time. So we met last week. Capor could supply us with a construction inspector, but Ernie said, I will work with you to make sure I'm not spending, you know, you're not being charged too much. That's, that's.
Who did it last time?
Ernie.
Did he?
But he was present. We did contact the village attorney to make sure there was not conflict of interest, since he was president before. But it has enough time that's passed that it's not, you know, we don't see there being a problem.
And this isn't something we have to bet out?
That's it. This is not something we have to bet out. My biggest concerns were that we did have some problems with roads before, but Ernie, I said to Ernie, I said, I really will have to take a close eye to make sure things like the mesh is taken out of the sewer grates. And, you know, I talked to him about, like on Wheelock Drive, when you go down Wheelock Drive and you're walking, your dog has been rained. I said, you do have to look at where those puddles are sitting now, so that doesn't happen. And he, he said, yes. Like, I don't know. It, it gives me a little bit of comfort knowing that he knows some of this, but there are some things we just have to make sure don't happen. So if you are in areas, like I'm going to be watching very carefully, make sure things are taken care of. Like I remember the first road, the first part of construction, there was just these pipes sitting on the roads forever. And the construction was all done and I'm like, why have those not been removed? They were on somebody's lawn for like a month. So things like that, I will be certainly the one to take care of them. What happened on Oak Tree Lane, I want to make sure it does not happen, because he was pretty upset. I was actually surprised he was here, because he's not.
He's still asking.
Yeah, but he wasn't, he's not, his road's done. Like, I was surprised he was. And then just the mesh and the grates, so. Do you have any questions? Do we want to approve? Let's look it over.
I think we have to trust Ernie and I think, you know, $40,000 roughly, it's like $1 million or something. I think if he could have, he knows what's going on. He loves.
We know he loves it. And we also know, he's worked with Capor before and they know Ernie, which I think helps.
Right.
Although I'm sure that's kind of somebody else, but it could be more expensive.
Right. And I think, you know, Ernie has, he's going to be doing it by his house too, so.
He's going to make sure it's somewhere.
Right that way, yeah, for sure. But I think we have good investment.
And this is, I'm just assuming on page two in the middle, it says that this project should be performed on a time and material basis, not to exceed $37,000. So that means that we, if they don't work the amount of hours they're estimating, that means we don't actually pay him that full amount, correct?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be just as he builds the hours.
Yes, that's what I would read.
I think with comes, kind of to bids coming in, I'd be very cautious of asking all contractors.
Cause they, they're two words with us last time, right? So we'll find out. End of April, did everybody see the special meeting for end of April? We're going to have, we'll have a board meeting before that.
For the 24th.
It's the 24th of April when we have the bids submitted and we'll have a special board meeting to decide on the bids, just so you know. Okay, so can we move forward? Does anybody have any other questions? All right, we'll move forward. Can I have a approval of Ernie Rossi for construction inspector for phase two of the roads project? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve Ernie or Rossi construction?
Thank you.
As, huh?
Go ahead.
As the project pre-construction supervisor services.
A second.
I'll second.
First by Johnson, second by Sudi. Discussion? All in favor?
反对.
Opposed? Okay, yes, that's okay. Next up, discussion regarding payment of the final invoice for Full blown Smith. So Lutteira mentioned, and the email that Kendall printed tonight was actually from Mark Kingston. And I, I. and I, I forwarded Kendall to print out, like, right after we were done with presentation tonight. Um, so this is actually from Mark Hanksen, it's just, when you forward things, sometimes it doesn't all show up. So, um, she did block our email after we fired her. Um, today, her email works, cause she was like, when am I getting paid? Um, but you can see how much we were charged, so February nineteenth, there was two inches of snow, two thousand dollars, January sixth, less than two inches of snow, nine thousand, January twenty-third, one and a half inches of snow, nine thousand, and then, she, what was the six? Oh, six hundred, cause she came and cleaned, they came and cleaned this up on a Sunday, when we told them, no, and, and it melted. That day, we were like, do not come. And then she charged us on February twelfth for that big snowstorm, only five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
But even that one, look at the numbers, it's actually ridiculous.
Yeah, makes no sense, no, it's not consistent at all. So, um, she wants to know if she's getting paid, she also charged us a late fee, cause we didn't pay her. Um, and we didn't send it, but we did not even, like, a late fee wasn't even in the contract, there was nothing that said, I will charge you a late fee if you don't charge, you know, pay on time. We've never gotten a late fee for any, you know, asphalt contracting, sometimes we're like, okay, yeah, if we got the bill, we're sending it, we were gonna talk about it as a board, um, like, it's not like we're, I don't, so if you wanna read Mark's email, um.
How many of these bills have we paid?
We paid all of them except for the five thousand nine hundred eighty dollar one.
Yes, and when I talked to Mark, he said that he'll go ahead and send a letter, um, just depending on what we came up with as a conclusion, whatever, to him, he could send a letter, I'll object to the last question.
Are these, uh, figures justified, like, do they have an itemized list of this cost?
It wasn't very clear on the bill.
No, but Mark went and found how much snow had fallen, and that's where he got his numbers. He knows how much we were charged and how much snow actually fell.
Okay.
Well, I'm looking at this current invoice, skilled, like sidewalk lady, they didn't come, we aren't believing they did that.
I know.
So we got charged four hours for three voids to do something you didn't have worked, it was for nine thousand dollars, they never came here.
The reason these guys took care of it.
Yeah.
So, and then asphalt came, and there's no.
Did we get a bill from them yet?
No, they fill on a monthly basis, so, Kendall, did we get a bill at all from asphalt?
No, not yet.
Be interesting to see what they.
Well, they're, they're.
Here's the last time.
Is much, much better, it's much better, like, laid out, telling us exactly.
No, no, you're saying what they charged us from the last, when they were here, but, yeah, okay.
Does asphalt charges the same amount every month?
No, it's based on, uh, each snow event, and they have an Excel spreadsheet on how much salt they use, what kind of trucks they use, how many hours or anything, and it has it all, they know. So.
You're a lot.
I, I, she's gonna be mad, but the fact that she turned off her email and would not allow us to, to email her, and then all of a sudden turned it back on, is not asking.
Oh, and stopped texting back too.
Oh, did not, yeah, there were just so many things. I, I feel very strongly in the fact that we have to say we're not paying this, like, I'm sorry, you overcharged us. We had questions about, the thing that really bothered me is we had questions about the last bill, she knew we had questions, we were talking to her, and then she still charged us a late fee, even though she knew we had questions.
Yeah.
And I was like, you just don't, that's not good business. So, um, I, I strongly think that we should have Mark send a letter, and we don't pay any more money to her. I think it's just terrible.
I don't think we owe them anything, seeing we, this is ridiculous, there's lies on here, um, and then we have had our company come out and written.
And, no, but we've already been charged.
And that's something else we can tell Mark, like, we, they came and cleaned up the whole village on that, like, a day later.
We don't owe anything, I'm a tireless, like, on top of that.
Um, can we go back and charge them for work that, can we charge them for work that asphalt did to?
Clean it up.
I think they have enough complaints. We've got a lot of complaints.
Um, by the way, I did, um, contact asphalt, cause Kendall messaged me on Friday, um, evening, and I was, I was at a musical for my kid, um, there was very, a lot of ice, and fortunately, asphalt was contacting Ernie, not me. And Ernie doesn't always check his, his text messages, so I contacted the guy that I've ridden around in the truck with, cause did you know that, I went around the truck while he was snow blowing the first day, so excited. I wish I had a picture of Brian. So, um, Mike, who I'd gone around in the truck with, he gave me the right number to contact if we do have any snow events, and so I, that guy has my number and I have his number, and I just want you to know that, so if there is, for instance, Black Eyes on Taylor, they had contacted Ernie the day before, but Ernie, I didn't realize it was gonna be bad, and Ernie did not forward it to me, and then it was bad, and it ended up melting and it was fine. But if there are any events, there is a way, hopefully now it is all cleared up, um, I just wanted to let you know that, so, hopefully that's taken care of. So, going forward, would you, um, would you like to withhold payment and have Mark send us a letter? Okay, can I have roll call on that, please?
Charles.
Do the I.
Woody, go.
Gasser I.
Stan I.
Eagle I.
Rudy I.
Okay, so LaTyria, that's your number one thing to do tomorrow, is make sure Mark sends her a certified letter, um, so she knows where.
Is there gonna be a discussion on the overpayments?
I mean, I should probably finish.
It's challenging, um, but it's already done, so it makes things harder, but, I mean, it's challenging, cause obviously.
It's so inconsistent.
Yeah, and then we did have all the complaints to like, confirm it, you know, they're like, bringing.
Five point four inches of snow, I would pay twenty-two thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars.
And it wasn't worth a job.
No, they didn't even quit her.
And then eight and a half, there's five thousand nine hundred eighty.
So it's like a scam.
Yes.
She was just picking numbers.
Hey, but we're still under the budget.
Barely, barely.
You could ask Mark about overcharging, and see if there's anything he could say, just to see, like, if it's possible. I know he did say it would be hard to, um, to go back and try and reclaim that.
Yeah.
But. I think the only thing we could do is if for some reason, like, if, if the new cloud did, had to redo work, and then he would try to invoice her, saying, we had to redo your work, like, I think that's maybe the only recourse we could have, but that would be.
Like.
What, um, what did Ernie Ross ask him, what is their cost?
We don't know yet, we have nothing.
Right, okay.
But we prepared her to, but we had to choose from last year, so it's significantly.
Yeah, we could maybe do a pass bill and say, okay, well, this is what it was last year, and basically, what's their trigger point? Two point, or two point oh inches, right? So what are they coming up for?
No, yes, right, exactly.
So those are.
He, she told me it was too much blowing, you know?
Yeah, well, two, those two, one nine and one five, those are the biggest, nine thou, over nine thousand dollars. And it's just like, you're not supposed to even come up unless there's two inches.
Well, and because I complained about that one, then when we had eight point five inches of snow, they didn't come until there was like six inches on the ground. And I was like, okay, now where are you, what are you doing? And then Kelly and I got in the car and chased her down, you need to be village president with me in my car. And I'm chasing down dog walkers. I totally do that.
So it was, you, the, uh, I meant the one-six and one-seven, one-twenty-three, and one-twenty-four, cause, um, it looks like the one twelve-nineteen, uh, through twelve-twenty was kinda reasonable.
Yeah.
But then, I don't know what happened on our trip.
Yeah. It was a lot.
Yeah, so that's a huge jump.
Okay, so, all in favor with sending a letter, correct? Okay, moving forward. Um, okay, next, we need a motion to go into closed session, um, hang on, let someone make a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session, explaining to the statute nineteen point eight five to one C, considering climate promotion and compensation or performance evaluation.
Second?
I, uh, second.
Okay, first by Sudi, second by Hinkle, all in favor? Okay, all right, so we're now in open session. Okay, um, can I move to go into closed session? I mean, into open session? Can I?
Second.
Okay, who's first?
Oh, you need a motion.
I do need a motion.
Make a motion, come on, close session.
Okay, first by Johnson, second by Sudi, moving out of closed session, into open session, um, okay, so our final, well, almost our final item, not our final item, um, discussion possible action on village administrator and clerk treasurer contracts. Um, we have approved to continue with Kendall barrier, our clerk treasurer, um, she will be adjusting some of her hours, um, Mondays, as well as some flexible hours during the week, and we will also approve, um, the village administrator LaTyria Shaw to continue working on Tuesdays and Thursdays with a thousand dollar, um, brace. So, do I have, um, discussion, or does anybody want, do we want a roll call, do you want? Roll call?
Charles.
Do the I.
Woody, go. Gasser I.
Stan I.
Eagle I.
Rudy I.
And, the last item, is, I need a motion to, um, for the resolution approval of accounts payable.
I'm sorry, who motioned that contract up?
Oh, it's Brian Johnson and Limasud.
That was to come out of closed session.
Oh, we did a roll call. Um, final item is the resolution approval of accounts payable. Um, everybody else sign accounts payable? I don't think I did, actually. Can I make a motion for someone to approve accounts payable?
Second.
First by Stein, second by Hinkle, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, eyes have it, so, Tess and George, at eight to ten, go to some dinner.